You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
Okay, being six o'clock, I'll call for order the June 27th meeting in the Swansea Planning Board here at Wickham Hall. Opinion with the rolls hall, Scott Self, me, I'm here, Richard Lane.
Here.
Mark Scalera.
Here.
Brandon Sell.
Here.
Michael York.
Here.
Victoria Ames.
Here.
Selecting rep Charlie Harbeck.
Here.
Uh, alternate Steve Malone.
Here.
Alternate Michael Scungeo and alternate James Johnson.
Here.
And we have a full board, so we don't need to see any alternates. Uh, the agenda tonight is, uh, review and approval of the minutes of June 13th, 2024. And we have discussions in other business, which is discussion A, which is Brown Memorial Field redevelopment. Stevenson Associates will be presenting that, and any other businesses may be required. So up to the beginning, we don't need a regional impact because there's nothing on the agenda that we're going to decide on, so that's how. So that brings us down to the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of June 13th? I'll make the motion. Motion by Brandon to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Victoria. Is there any further discussion, changes or deletions? Okay.
Uh, page four, uh, five, the location site plan, uh, Perry Lane. The minutes say that the hut will be placed behind the fence to the west of the property. The hut will be to the east side of the fence.
I think they meant the fences to the west of the property and the hut is behind it. But that's not what it's worded. You'd rather it be worded differently?
Well, it says the hut is placed behind, but it can't be, you're right.
Behind the fence, that is west of the property. The fence is west of the property, so it's behind it. But I say you want to change, just change your wording now if you want.
Well, I would say is that, uh, that the hut would be placed to the east side of the fence.
Okay, hut would be placed to the east side of the fence. Anything else?
Oh, I mean, it's, uh...
Okay, so there's nothing else, then all those in favor of approving the minutes with those changes, say aye. Aye. All of the votes, and they're approved. And that brings us to the discussions in other business, which is the Brown Memorial Field redevelopment. And this is Stevenson Associates going to give their presentation, and anybody who can't see the chart, just bring your seats accordingly. They're going to present it on that easel right there. So you can just bring your chairs over here, or however you can see that.
Thanks everyone for coming out. I'm Taylor Schuldau with Stevenson Associates, a landscape architect, that's Serny Bull, civil engineer. Stevenson Associates, so we were hired, uh, to work on a master plan for the Brown Memorial Field. And when we talk master plan, we're talking a very zoomed out, broad scale version of a plan of what it could be down the road. Uh, this is in no way a site plan that's ready for construction or anything along those lines. Uh, so what we're hoping to do today is we worked on a final report, and we presented that to our, um, team that we've been working with. And we just wanted to give a quick summary or presentation of the work that we've done to date so far. Anything else?
Yeah, we want to recognize Stephon and Michael and Ashley as the main components to, with the, from the town that we work with, along with Joe, uh, DeRusio as well. Thank you guys so much.
Just before we get started, would you just orient that for everyone here, just orientate where the streets are and that stuff, just to point out?
Sure thing.
What we're looking at.
Yep.
We're going to walk you through a series of images, um, so that we can walk you through the process that we went through with the town. So the last picture will actually be the, uh, the vision that we came to with, based off of the input. So we're going to walk you through sort of the starting locations. The first thing that we did is that we started with a public input, uh, site walk, and then, um, that led into our first public meeting.
So what we did here is we worked with, um, the Keen GIS technician and got, uh, GIS data to make the site plan here. This wasn't a formal survey, so we took, um, the aerial, the, the building outlines, the road outlines, property lines, things like that, uh, the GIS systems, and made this site plan that you see here. Um, so it's close enough for this kind of planning study. It's not super accurate, the on-the-ground survey. Uh, but to orient everybody, West Swansea Road is here, Route 10, West Street. Uh, the Brown Memorial Field is here, and the property line for the Brown Memorial Field is the thicker, uh, black dash line. And there's also this triangle chunk in here as well. The Historical Society Building is here. Um, the Cutler School is over on this side of the page. Uh, West Street runs along here.
And South Winchester Street is on this side.
So Brownfield is the entire location including what is on the Cutler Schools, though?
We...
Coming back up now.
Yes.
We, uh, we did look at a scenario where we had, uh, developments on the Cutler School, but was later decided to kind of focus on the core of the, um, Brown Field because the future of the Cutler School is uncertain.
Yeah, so what we understood based off the feedback from the folks that we worked with at the town is that currently the Cutler School is using part of the property that actually belongs to the town. Um, so that is part of the parcel that we want to have. Does that answer your question?
No. So the, the focus of our work was mostly this area within this, uh, dash line here, this thicker black dash line, uh, including this triangle piece as well. So we had our first kickoff and site visit with the, um, team back in November, which is where we went and kind of learned a little bit about the site, took pictures, uh, understood from the committee what they were looking for. Uh, and then existing conditions, surrounding area, uh, who uses the site right now, uh, who they want to keep using the site in the future, different programming elements, things like that. And then there was some necessary improvements that they wanted to, uh, see done at the site regardless of what design we came up with. Things like formalizing the parking, and the main ones were the existing recreation infrastructure, things like the lights, the scorer's booth, the storage shed, the bathrooms were outdated.
The dugouts.
And the dugouts, the bleachers, things like that need to be addressed. So this kind of brings us to our first, um, community meeting that we had in January, uh, this year. And what we did at this meeting was what we, we really wanted to present what we saw at the site, the surrounding area, the context, and get input from the public, uh, through voting, through discussion, on what they would like to see at the site moving forward. Uh, and then so we made this map here, kind of, we call it our context map, showing what is surrounding the site. So we had things, we identified things nearby the site that were single-family housing, multifamily, commercial properties, uh, redeveloped industrial sites, town-owned land, and this could all be seen, uh, with the various colors on the map here.
So you just say what the color codes are?
Yep. Town-owned land is the yellow, so, and then the stuff in here. Uh, the single-family housing is this, uh, more of a peach color. Yep. The multifamily housing was the green ones. Uh, the darker green was the commercial properties, and then, uh, the pinkish was the redeveloped industrial land.
Thank you.
So the site was mainly surrounded by single-family and multifamily housing. At this same, uh, public meeting, the first one, what we looked at was a, almost like a vision board or inspiration board that showed, uh, some ideas for what the site, programming items of the site could be used for. We weren't saying that they had to be this, but we were trying to get the thoughts rolling and, um, see what people thought about what they want to see there in the future or keep the programming the same.
There was a lot of strong feedback and support for, um, keeping and improving the softball field. Uh, folks really wanted to see pickleball courts involved, uh, on the plan.
Yep.
Uh, picnic areas, and then a playground area for different age groups.
And the dog park.
And the dog park, that came up as well.
So then after this, we kind of went back and started our sketch, uh, sketching process. Because up to this point, we hadn't put any kind of pens on paper for any design work to be done yet. So we had the first public meeting that we talked about in early January, and then near the end of January, we had a, uh, a round of concept designs that we presented to the town committee. And so you can see an example of one of them here. Um, and so when we're doing our concept process, what we're looking to do is have variant levels of, um, infill on the site. So you do one that's a, uh, a low level, which is very more, more achievable, moderate, and then heavy infill where you look at kind of redoing the entire site. And then that's, the end product is usually kind of accumulation of all three. So then after we met with the, um, with the town committee again at the end of January, uh, February 15th, we had the second public meeting where we presented our refined sketches to the public. And then, um, at that point, we were still at this kind of hand level, like this, uh, style that we'll see here. We looked at a number of different options throughout the site, uh, and got feedback on them. And then after that meeting, we kind of had a sense, uh, from the public where what direction we were going with this. So then after this, after the public meeting, we went back and, um, refined the sketches again further, and then met with the town, uh, committee again to, um, review these.
So they, we presented three actions at the second public meeting. This is the first option, so this, uh, shows the light infill development that Taylor mentioned. So in this scenario, it keeps the softball field exactly where it is. It improves the lighting around, uh, the athletic areas. It keeps the multi-use field over here, and then improves the, sort of, the plaza and gathering area adjacent to, uh, the softball field. And it formalizes the parking and then provides some pick-up, pickleball courts and a basketball court. And the media info option, rotated.
Yeah, we've rotated the baseball field, uh, sorry, the softball field. Um, the orientation that's in now is not the preferred orientation. You kind of look to have, um, it's on the northeast axis to deal with afternoon sunlight. Um, so we spun the baseball, the softball field to the preferred orientation of this one. Um, looked at kind of a fan parking option, trying to squeeze as many parking spots in there as we can to handle events, uh, days where the park's at full capacity. Um, a U-12 soccer field, and then another multi-use field, and the three, uh, pickleball courts on the site, and a dog park.
And the pavilion cook shack, and that's, um, play structure area.
Yep. And then, as I talked before, we looked at another option that was the highest level of infill, which would propose effort. And this was that, that one, which we moved, uh, to change the, uh, access point to the, uh, center it on the property lines here, bring in a large parking lot into the center, and then have the activity, um, kind of set up around that. So it's more accessible. You don't have to walk distances to get to the fields, things like that. And we also looked at this option at utilizing the school, uh, for some program elements. Things like connecting the roadway across the site, so there has a full loop connection here. What's the answer?
Yeah, so this is under the assumption that the school would have been, uh, transferred back to the town, and the town would be able to use this school property for, to support the programming on Brownfield.
Is one issue with that, the town may not get that school?
Certainly. This was just creative ideas, how do you look at what were the different options that could happen? And one of the things that we heard in the first public meeting is that folks really wanted to explore what would it look like if the town had the opportunity, um, to utilize that space. But you're exactly correct, and the feedback that we heard from our second public meeting was that folks were really kind of narrowing in on the second option because it's not a given that the town will actually be able to use that space. And so this was the concept that we then took back. We took additional feedback from the folks who came to the public meeting, from the town committee, and integrated that into a final plan, planning level plan.
So then after we were able to, uh, like Serny said, get feedback, this was, uh, the proposed plan that we landed on. So the baseball field is, uh, oriented in that northeast location, keeping the original access that's already there of Route 10. Um, you have a large fan parking lot here capable of accommodating over a hundred cars just in this location here. Um, pickleball courts, we showed these at tennis, uh, court sides because the tennis courts are larger, and that way if we do use a pickleball later, we know they fit. Um, this road continues to the north and then connects to the existing access up here and, uh, over to the Cutler School as well, so there is a circuitous, circuitous route through the site. Um, there's a new maintenance shed near, at the end of the parking lot here. We have, uh, a cook shack, uh, bathroom, restroom facilities on the site, a plaza space, two fenced-in, uh, multi-age playgrounds, which is near, uh, centrally located to the field so that people can still see the kids while they're playing. Um, a large soccer field, a multi-use field, uh, basketball court, which is similar where it is now, and, um, some landscaping improvements, and a walkway system around the site. So that was the rendering, and then after we got the preferred options selected, we, um, sent this out to the cost estimator and received cost estimate data back from that, and, um, we worked on a final report.
Yeah. Open the floor for questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, the single-family homes?
Yes.
Are they protected from, I mean, fencing or privacy?
So I expect that there is some existing fencing along this edge here.
Yes, ours, yes.
Yeah.
No privacy fence.
Um, so at this point, I don't think that there was additional fencing proposed in this, but I would say if this plan goes forward, that would definitely be something to bring up in refining this plan is that there may, may need to be additional privacy fencing along this south edge. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
We don't want access into our, yeah.
That makes total sense.
Absolutely.
Steve?
I feel maybe like I'm late to the game. Um, you've got some nice plans there. Is there room for a track, walking track, running track with exercise stations along the way?
I think that is something that could be integrated into the, the next phase of planning. Um, there are some walking trails that we suggested around to connect the various different field areas, and I certainly think that you could integrate in some fitness stations along these areas. Other questions? Yes, sir.
It's a shame that we can't incorporate the school property into this to some element because it's such a viable part of that whole property, and you mentioned that we may not have access. Who owns the school now?
The school district.
Okay.
So what happens is...
What is their purpose?
West Cutler School is closed by the school district.
Correct.
They have to post that on the state site, and other educational, uh, institutions have the right to that property first.
Okay.
Such as a charter school or something like that.
Really?
Yes. And I have contacted, uh, Ruthie Ward, he's, he's a state senator. We're going to try to change that legislation if we can.
That would be fantastic. If we could try to figure out, even if it's a part of a future plan for this, if we could try to incorporate that property into this, because that would be brilliant. I think what you're going to do with the property is fantastic. It, it looks great, and it's a lot of green space, and this town loves that kind of green space. And I actually own the fence company property that's right up by the, uh, right away up there.
Is this one?
That, uh, one that's on, yeah, that one right there.
Excellent.
And having the ball field down here is great because I'll tell you, I've got barrels full of softballs.
Tommy, Tommy wants them back.
That whole, you know, these guys can, can pile them right out of there, so having it set back there is great. It's probably a concern for some of the activities there, but, um, having it set back there really helps a lot of the people there. Whether it makes a difference or not is irrelevant at this point, but my concern is that we could figure out what to do with Cutler School.
Yeah.
Would be brilliant.
We're hoping we do have a shot.
Yeah.
The IRC is quite clear that they, that's what they have to do.
Even if it was gone and became access to everything?
It's what the statute says, that the, uh, other educational, um, certain facilities, and there's a lot of charter schools looking for places to be.
Yes.
It seems like at least when there is a transition with the school, it will give the town an opportunity to formalize the easements agreements around the property. Um, you know, because this property does belong to the town, but it's currently utilized by Cutler. And I don't believe we found any recorded easements or agreements about that utilization. So when there is a change in use, hopefully that the town will take that as an opportunity to sort of revisit that.
All the buildings are on the property that the school owns? Because I know they built a gymnasium and things, so that's, okay.
Yes, that's on their property. Yes, sir.
You mentioned upgrading on the lighting and stuff like that, which I was, is definitely paramount. If you're going to go through this, it's probably one better lighting. Does that also include all these multi-use fields or, speaking of as well? I only, I say that simply because I know some of the butters also in this room as well as including myself. I'm concerned about, if you're going to put up giant lights, what's that going to do to my backyard and stuff?
Yeah. So currently we have shown additional lights that are closer to the residential properties, and part of what needs to happen in the next phase is that those lights need to be designed. Um, I believe that you guys already have requirements that they need to be fully shielded down past lighting, which is going to reduce their spread of light onto adjacent properties. But I think a photometric plan is going to be a really important part of the next phase.
And I love what you're saying, and I think the field needs a huge upgrade. It's really overrun. It's kind of beat up. I know a lot of people that use the field all the time. It's very popular. This is great. I don't, this is fine. But it's kind of starting to pack the people that live around the place. It's been here for years. Uh, we're actually, we're just going to figure that out as we work it out.
Totally, and I would say the existing lighting is very, very dated. And, um, not only is that a huge cost impact for the town in maintaining that lighting, but it also means that there's a lot of light pollution associated with that.
How much of these multi-use fields will be used after hours? Like, probably not many.
Yeah, I don't know.
And a lot of kids roam around the area often. I don't, I mean, the field itself is used solely by the ballplayers, and it's great. And other than that, when they're done, the light shuts off. It's not a problem.
Yeah.
But if you're going to illuminate the entire location, that's, there's no way that's not going to spread all over, so.
True, and what I would recommend that the town consider, with, again, when they're moving to the next phase of design, is there's LED lights now, um, and those lights provide, oh, the ability to really direct where the light is as opposed to just throwing off the light in all directions. They can really sort of point it on the field, which you get due to the light pollution that's getting, leading, it can, you know, eliminate light pollution that's actually going to be in adjacent properties. Yes, sir.
So, um, so another, I mean, seeing your concern about the lighting, they could, um, I'm, I'm, uh, there's a couple of us here representing for, uh, pickleball in the area. Um, so the, just quickly, the tennis courts are actually the pickleball courts.
Uh, we showed them as tennis courts because we wanted to, the tennis courts have a bigger footprint.
Yes, much bigger.
Yeah, so we wanted to be able to know if these things would fit because we're working at, you know, with GIS information that's not accurate as, say, a survey on the ground. So we wanted to be able to have enough real that these would fit on there, and so we know tennis courts fit, pickleball courts will fit.
And it provides the town flexibility that if 20 years from now you have to make turn them into tennis courts, you have that ability. But this area can be straight for pickleball, yes.
Okay. So from a pickleball perspective and a tennis perspective, the orientation is perfect, uh, the same north-south.
Yeah.
Um, I've played in a lot of places in the country, uh, the lighting, P and D setup on timers, um, that basically, you turn, uh, down the water street in Keene, they have them set up. Turn the knob, they stay on for 45 minutes, and then they shut off. Um, and then I've also seen other places where they cap it off at a certain time, whether it's nine o'clock, 10 o'clock, wherever the ground sites that you can cap.
Yes.
So that may address some of the lighting issues. If the lighting followed the noise ordinance, I think that would be, you know, it's kind of all real. Yeah, yeah. Um, so just the, I like the trees and stuff, uh, but one of the guys that's here that pretty much takes care of the courts in Keene, and trees around tennis courts and pickleball courts, although they look great, uh, they create a lot of debris that needs to be, yeah, cleaned up and given recycling. And it deteriorates the courts. Plus it makes play difficult when light comes in at certain times of the day, but, I mean, I like the look of it, but the practicality of it, I'd say not be great unless they're lower height trees. Thank you.
Yep.
So I just want to clarify, if they were shorter trees, would that help them?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, if, if anybody would take a look around some of the surrounding towns, tennis courts, uh, pickleball courts, Jonathan Daniels in Keene is a premier court location. Um, there's six courts there. There are tall pines, and they just rain debris all summer long.
That's why we took the, that's why we took the trees down at Brown Memorial.
Right, and that line of evidence.
Right, yeah, you get pine cones, needles, and it's...
No, no, no.
It retains moisture. They're not clean.
Yeah. It's worse. Uh, I mean, I think one thing we were looking at too, especially when it was a site visit, was, you know, there was not a lot of shade on the side. And so it's trying to find a balance here between...
It is a balance, right. It's a balance. You got it, yep.
Do you have an estimated cost to do this?
Do you have a, you can talk to your head or you can all look it up. Taylor's going to look it up. Did you have another question, sir?
Um, this is more for this, for this group right here. I think this is great for multiple reasons. One, we're sitting on our aquifer. It's perfect. Number two, that whole corridor down Route 10, it really, this is the kind of thing that's going to start making it look a lot more attractive. It's such a major route through our whole area, and it really could stand to have a, I don't know, lipstick if you will. It really needs to be cleaned up a little bit down through there because it looks kind of, if I may be so bold, it looks kind of trashy. So this kind of stuff is going to be nice to help us get this moving in a nice area. I remember back in the years when I used to do a lot of work up in Concord, they took that 93 corridor, and they built all those buildings up to that 93 corridor in Concord because they wanted to have that really nice aesthetic look going through town and heading north and south. But this kind of thing will really make that area stuff, you know, pick up and look nice.
If it attracts the recreation, and we hope it does, but also it's a boon to area businesses. I mean, it, it pulls some of the campground's in the area, and, um, people are asking where to go to do these activities. Where can we go? Uh, and then when people are done playing, you know, you got, you know, the stores, restaurants, breweries next door. So that will all benefit.
Um, and so the process that we got back, so the actual construction cost itself was about, uh, 2.9 million for the construction. We have a couple contingencies in there. There's a $500,000 estimate contingency. Uh, there is a $514,000 GC insurance, uh, kind of overhead contingency, which brings the estimate to about 3.9 with those contingencies. Uh, and then we did ask our cost estimator to escalate these costs, uh, for five years, and then another five years. So looking at five years out and 10 years out, and essentially that's adding 30% to the, um, price if you're going to push out this far. So if to build in 2029, uh, it's about one, another 1.1 million, and then if you wait to 2034, another 1.5.
Another thing that we included in the report is some suggested phasing or sequencing of this plan because we realized that that's a pretty big bite to take all at one time. Um, so in the report, we talk about, you know, in the first phase, relocating the softball field and wrapping in this parking, uh, just letting it be gravel parking to start with, um, and then, you know, getting sort of the base of the fields established, and then coming back in potentially later and paving the parking and then formalizing the plaza and the playground areas and the different walkways. So I think that there, this can be sequenced in a way, but there is going to be probably an eventual bite that'll be pretty, will be sizable.
Who will maintain the field?
I'm going to defer to Stephon on that one.
Be the bottom of your question. Who will maintain it?
Who, who's going to maintain the field?
DBW Recreation.
May I, I have two questions, and one of those will be guys in the other, I think I can pick of all people. So, um, the first, and let me just ask them both, and the...
Sure.
So there's the triangle to the west that has sort of a sweeping line through it. What is the intended purpose of that space? And then my second question is, would pickleball courts still be as affected by trees if the trees that are to the west of the courts are moved onto that triangle area? So there's still, you know, the greenery and shade and whatnot, but they're not as close to the courts themselves?
So we'll answer the first one. This area is supposed as an off park right now?
That's good.
And so you could potentially lose some of the trees into that area. Were there other questions?
I do want to spawn.
Sure.
Regarding, you talked about upgrading the seating features and stuff. How, is that shown on this map or do you have a kind of idea?
Yes, so these are the dugout buildings here and then the bleachers are these.
Fairly, I mean, you're adding a lot more parking, so you may end up having a lot more people that are gonna be showing up to this event. I would maybe look at increasing the seating. It seems like a little small for your map. During the summer, and I've been there for almost 20 years in Swansea, so I've seen a lot of, there are a lot of groups of people that go out there.
Yeah.
People with families, some people come day there, or afternoon or evening, whatever, like look at what's there and then at least double what's there.
Yeah, those are showing there. It's hard to get a sense of the scale, but we're really.
But if you're gonna double parking, you're gonna double people.
Absolutely.
We're advancing.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
To the west side of the pickleball or tennis courts, that pool area there extending down towards Cutler School, is that all going to be parking also?
Just this area is parking. This is a circular circulation because this area is currently used, our understanding is it's currently used for bus circulation in and around the school. So we do carve out, propose to carve out some parking here, but wanted to allow the buses to continue.
And how many cars have you figured in here?
I've got the paper.
I think 15.
Five zero?
One five.
One five right here. Were there other questions, folks in the back?
How important is the lighting on that multi-purpose field? How important is the lighting on that because that's the field that affects the whole residential area.
Yeah.
The other ones are towards, you know, the top there towards residential, the backyard, but there's commercial on the left-hand side there.
I think if we were to draw them, it would be from that field.
I think that's a really good question.
It would be from that field, yeah.
To ask Ashley. So this is a smaller field and depending on how the town and especially the recreation department plans to program this area, it might be that lighting's not needed over here, especially if it's geared towards youth sports that are not, you know, you don't want to have little kids staying up really late. But I think that I can write that down. I've been taking notes on the feedback and I can write that down and we can pose that to Ashley.
Where do you envision the ice rink?
I think you're gonna have to take that up at the town.
Playing with the multi-purpose field like spot. Since it's five o'clock or so in the winter, you might want to have some lighting.
Is there gonna be any playground equipment there?
Yeah, there is. There's both of these, these are two separate fenced-in play areas with playground equipment. And we fence them in, kind of separate them to have multi-age.
I guess I just have one more final thing. Cutler School, you mentioned buses. Where are they gonna be coming in, going through? I mean, if, if this was absorbed by another entity, would they have access to all of this for buses and whatnot? Or would they be isolated in their own spot?
What you'd have to do is look at the deed and see if that's part of the school, or is it part of the brown field? They're all dependent what that deed read. They would probably want that if they had.
Oh geez, yeah.
But if it's a small charter school.
Because I know they use that now. Okay, well that's something.
Generally speaking, generally speaking, there's no public transportation for a charter school, even though charter schools are public schools.
Interesting.
So this is part of the property of Brown Field?
Yes. And whether it's cut off right there and whether they would have access to your new complex to service that school if somebody else took over that school?
I don't know if there is an easement over this area to the benefit of the school. That's the question.
You should sit down with the attorneys, look at that.
Yeah.
They could go deep. I would suggest they do that outline so that if we don't get the school, that we know what is actually ours and what's not ours.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because if we don't have, if, if, if they have access to that, that could be a really busy area right through there.
I'm sorry, I don't recall if you mentioned or not. Will there be lighting for the soccer field?
There is currently lighting proposed for this field around the softball field and on this one here. And that's what Coach Rude's asking if the lighting on this smaller soccer field could be dropped.
Could it be moved to the court?
I don't know if you have any, like, the.
No, we got one here and one here, but no. It's like at some.
Well, does it have a residual amount of noise? It does have noise to it. Yep.
This is an older, I know people live in, live near.
Yep, yeah, yeah, yep. I'm guessing, I mean, people play at the Water Street probably too, 89-ish. If the lights are on. Um, they're on a timer. So the, I think it's, well, in the middle of the summer, when it's really hot in the middle of the day, people like go up and it's, they're putting together younger advanced players that are playing in the evening because they're working. And then your older players, like myself, are playing in the morning. And it's cool in the middle of the day, but you might get some use. It's usually in the morning and evening. Larger routes are there. Yeah, I understand your concern.
Any other questions or feedback?
Just a question, so the part that's not covered there is the Swansea museum. And I know there's some discussion about possibly adding one to that and parking is a, is a concern for that. So, I mean, there is parking available here. There's certainly not a volume museum. But also people coming to the game and waiting for their child might actually want to walk over to the museum if it happens to be open. So would there be access from the parking lot to that museum property?
That's not currently depicted, but I think that's, that's an opportunity to wrap into the next phase. You know, I don't think that we had anyone from the museum come to our feedback sessions to offer that. But I mean, there is opportunity to provide connection, especially with pedestrian connection there.
So is there an existing connection already? It's within a short.
Yeah, it's very close.
Yes, and I didn't know there'd be a fence there, that's why we weren't finding so. I'll reach out, make sure they don't miss the opportunity.
Yeah, for sure. Anyone else?
If the town is gonna maintain that, is there a place for a maintenance shed?
Yeah, right here. Yeah, tried to make it easy so they could just drive straight in. Anyone else?
Is the yellow around, like the soccer field there, the yellow strip around the soccer field, is that a walkway?
Yes.
So all the yellow is a walkway and so.
Yeah, exactly. Kind of comes through the whole site down around.
Is that where the spectators would be standing for lunch, those games?
So we have bleachers shown here.
How about the soccer field?
Um, right in here, yeah. So they could go in here, but there's also some grassy area here that if they had folding chairs or something like that, they could bring those in. If the town wanted to add bleachers in this area through the soccer field, they certainly could.
For that area?
Yeah.
You only need them on one side because in a soccer match, you do not want the parents and spectators on the same side as the. I'm an old soccer coach and you just don't want. Coaches don't want to hear their parents saying, oh my god, it's not the Vicks field, or whatever, you know?
And you pretty much said that the pickleball courts would not be lit, correct?
At this point, they are not shown as being lit, but again, this is very high level and I've been taking notes on your feedback. So if that's something that in the next, when this moves into the design phase, if that's what you'd like to see, I mean, the next designer that picks this up could certainly make that adjustment.
These guys over here play pickleball, I'm assuming, so usually they play at night as well or is there?
Yes, yeah, yeah, we just had that discussion. The, the younger people that are working during the day, they will typically come out and play from four. I mean, I just left, there was a session in Keene, four to seven. Those courts aren't lit. There's another set of courts in Keene that are lit on a timer. And people will just show up with their stuff and play. So I think, I think those are not, are not possible to sit. I think they're, they're cackling. But I'm not optimistic about that. That's, so it's up to the town whether that is.
It might be that they're lit and. I mean, in future meetings, it sounds like there may be a light over there, which again, that's, that's more towards the commercial part of that, that slot, so I don't think that much of a problem.
Did you play pretty much throughout the year?
Uh, in, in the wintertime, you typically don't. It, it goes from basically, well, yeah, once it starts snowing, you don't want to be out there with snow shovels tearing up the courts, resurfacing them. It's costly, so, yeah, everything moves indoors.
Probably pay for the lighting to.
That I don't know. It must be, it's gotta be, what do you think, Don? Recreation Department? It's gotta be tied to them, right?
Must be. Has to be.
It'd be a good question to ask Andy Pohannan. Those are not, they're not gonna pay for it anyway. Doesn't really matter. Well, if you talk about.
Pauline should pay for it, right?
Any other questions? With this for Manny Money? And it was a good presentation. Thanks very much for coming and showing us what you've done so far. So will you be back again then? We expect you back again? Yes, no?
This is the end of our contract. I would expect that the next phase would be that the town would put together an RFP to bid out the design work and to have the opportunity to bid on that.
Good, great. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
To show me my hostess.
Right. See it.
It was gonna hospital to show me my hostess.
Very useful. It's not, I just have one more question, obviously, I do it every time. Every time.
Looking at reviewing. FWOL just told me. My question is, why wasn't it presented there, stated, like that, it was done first I saw? And that the owners are all trying to look for that sign. Or they went to make that list. My question, I guess, would be to them, why wasn't this presented to us on the original plan? Why wasn't it shown to us? What size is going to be?
It was on the initial plan, it's ten minutes.
So it's, they got the variance before? They gave the point for it?
No, but what it's signed for is, was.
It was on the plan. It was on the plan that we prepared. So.
So they were shown on there somewhere before they had the variance?
So it was on the plan? We looked it over, but that's not, that wasn't on that plan. That was actually.
It was.
It was a per.
This is a.
As shown on the plan. Is it gonna show where they're gonna put it? Is that where it's gonna be, where it was shown on the plan?
Yes.
Because generally, yeah, they give the variance for another sign that exceeds the square footage of our sign ordinance. But planning board usually gets to say it's the where it's going on the plan and not the CBA. They just, they just tell, or they just make a decision about, can you go over what's allowed? Planning board makes a decision as where you want it. So it wasn't over size.
It was, it was within size, but it was the fact that it was an additional sign. Because you only get one sign for business. You get one freestanding sign for business and one attached sign for business.
That's why it's standing?
No, there's attached.
Attached, yeah.
This is like, say you're standing at neighbors, it's on that side.
The sign that are, we're only dock, are we standing dock side? I don't recall the multi-purpose field.
This is.
The sign is to direct our truck traffic. So they told you. If you built your tennis court, you'd have.
This is just a main stuff, it's not.
This is a.
Yeah, it's not specific to, say, trucks. That's a street.
It's just so they know.
It's a street level.
I don't think the street looks so.
Look, you can buy cannons on the.
Yes.
I think they're all just.
I had thought I'd heard that as well. When it was. Something about a sign that directs one driveway. So that's not the sign. Maybe they drove it. And they're just having a little sign. If it was on the site, then any rights exist? None of those are ever on there. No, they didn't. It's not.
I'm sorry, to drag yourself, but I just want to see it.
These are all gonna be publicly available as well, so if you want to get copies.
Anything else? All, yeah. All purpose? Yeah, so good. First tournament? Is it?
Yeah.
Second, I'm, is there a discussion? A little bit favorite, they hit the saying hi.
Yeah, how, I mean, they're all online.
That's what's for bond, I just.